I'd like to call the meeting of the Maryville Town Council for Tuesday, June 12th, 2012 to order at 6:30. With the invocation, please rise for Gay Maddox, Living Grace Church of the Nazarene.
Father, we thank you so much for these elected officials and their willingness to put themselves aside for us and to work in our behalf, and I ask that you will bless them, to strengthen and encourage them, and help them to know how much you care and how interested you are in the business that they're taking care of. We ask that you guide and lead, and we ask it in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I am the Pledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Gernsy, roll call, please.
Span.
Present.
Hardaway.
Yeah.
Miano.
Cajun.
Grouchek.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Whitey.
Here.
Edit. Here. Six members. Do we have any petitions, communications, or remonstrations, Mr. Fink?
No sir.
Mr. Gernsy. Okay. Next item is the Consent Agenda, the Council's payable register voucher approval, June 12th, 2012, and the approval of the Town Council minutes for May 22nd, 2012. Pleasure.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Whitey, seconded by Mr. Grouchek to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Standing Committee, Budget and Finance, Mr. Grouchek.
The 2012 budgets, we're going to start that process. Howard has outlined a schedule of when we need to start with the approvals and discuss with the department heads, what we're going to do with this budget process.
Yeah, and all the departments have been provided their Form 1s. For those who still have them, get them back to the clerk treasure as soon as possible. The deadline's on the memo that was provided. In addition, this year, we're going to be doing budget workshops with the Finance Committee and Chairman, Mr. Grouchek, so we'll go ahead and schedule those with the individual departments and move forward.
That's all I have.
Okay. Does anybody have anything under Public Works for Mrs. Miano? Okay. I have one item. Just for general information, this morning, I went to the NERC transportation policy committee meeting, and I was not aware of this, and I don't know if Bruce is or not. I pass it on to John Dewinsky, our town engineer from Robinson. He and Bruce are going to look into this. Endot awarded a bridge contract, Lake County Bridge Number 255, 68th Place over Turkey Creek Branch. Larson Daniels was the low bidder. Approximately $457,000 are going to be replacing that bridge on 68th Place. I'm thinking it's just east of the three-way stop sign intersection at Madison there. So, John and Bruce, if you can get with Bruce, John and invest, especially let Mrs. Miano know, that being her ward, her neighbors are going to want to know about that, and we probably ought to coordinate Joe with traffic if there's any type of road closures. You and I went through that out east at Grand Boulevard for months and months and months, so if we can try and get ahead of the game, that might help with traffic flow through there, so. Okay. Anything else under Public Works? Council Affairs, Mr. Span.
Yeah, I'd just like to mention a call I got about sharks on 30. Guy was in there, ordered his food, paid for. This guy was on cellphone. Put the phone down, was mopping the floor, got the, I want to say, wax paper towel, more or less, picked up his order to give it to him, he refused it. Wanted his money back, so they called police. Police came in and to round it out, he was told to call the Health Department. You know, I've never had a problem with sharks myself, but you should wash your hands, put your gloves on. I think that guy needs retraining. So, I don't know if the council should get involved with that, but my thing is, is I want to let people know, because he was upset, and I just thought I'd bring it up.
That council knows.
I would defer to Mr. Buscemi, but I would guess that's a Lake County Health Department matter, is it not? Citation?
And to respond specifically to the council's question, the council should not get directly involved in that matter.
If you're an eyewitness, I mean, if you want to report it, Don, I guess down at the county and let them start a file and investigate it, that's one thing. Okay. Anything else under Council Affairs?
No, that's it.
Personnel Policy Employee Benefits, Mr. Grouchek.
Yes, I have a phone call into Carol Welsh right now to see where we're at as far as what we stand on our health insurance benefits. She had said that the claims were coming almost to a close, but she said that they would pay them up to a year, some of the old claims that are still out there. So, I haven't had anything back from her yet, and I'm expecting to get that either sometime this week or sometime next week, to see exactly where we stand.
Okay. Anything else under Personnel? Seeing none, Public Safety, Mr. Whitey?
Yes, I got one issue. Chief, New Dollar General, Untaft, their delivery trucks, semis are going up and down Cleveland Circle, and that call said it's a weight limit, and they've asked the truck drivers to stop the residents, and they were told that the owner of the building said he got permission. Could you run over there and let them know that there is a weight limit, and semis are not allowed on that street, mainly because of that COVID. All right, thank you.
Okay. I'll take care of it for a second.
Good. Mr. Whitey, through your committee to the chief, Joe and I have been talking about this Flex Fuel Grant that's available out at NERC. I inquired about that today, Joe. I'm going to have a meeting with the outgoing Executive Director. There appears to be money available that another organization is not going to use, and so we're going to stay on that to try and bring in anywhere from $85,000 to $100,000 for alternative fuels, since the squads are Flex Fuel capable, and see if we can't still get that money. If not for 2012, definitely we'll get it for 2013, so I'm still working on that project for you, okay?
It would probably help the town out greatly, because right now, we're approximately, I believe, there are 42 vehicles in a fleet that we have, and all the new cars we're ordering are Flex Fuel E85.
Yeah.
That's by state bids required.
Okay.
So, we have the vehicles, and there's two local stations that supply the fuel, and I believe Myers and-
Myers does.
And Family Express. Okay, so, I've already solicited both of them to take the cost of the-
Okay. Anything else under Public Safety, Mr. Whitey?
No, that's all.
All right. Parks and Recreation, Mr. Span.
I went by the Prusen today, and they had the pouring place-in-place with the playground equipment. It looks very nice. It was a unique surface that I walked on. It was, the kids were crazy about it. I talked to them, they really enjoyed it.
Okay.
Took my shoes off to, you know, to feel it. It was, it's a pretty good idea. You know, I wasn't, I had reservations. I'm a mulch man, but if it saves us money on mulch, I think it's a good idea. The kids were excited, a few of the parents liked it. We had some out-of-towners there from Indianapolis with children. They were crazy about it.
Is it completely done, Don?
Uh, yeah.
Is it completely poured?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
They finished it up Friday. I was up there Friday, and they were finishing up about 11:00.
Not to drive by on my way up to work. Okay.
So, that's my-
Okay. Environmental Affairs, Mrs. Baron.
No report.
Okay. Elections and Public Relations, Mrs. Miano, I'll defer to Mr. Fink. Any updates on the parade? Howard, how are we doing?
We're doing well. The parade is going to be on July the 3rd at 6:00 PM. Trying to get the word out as much as possible, so for the folks, reporters in the audience, we can get some publicity on the 4th of July parade. It will be on the 3rd of July, starting at 6:00 PM. Launches from the same place we always have, at the funeral home. It'll be a great night, and hopefully, people will enjoy the change that we've made to the evening parade on the 3rd, and we're looking forward to it.
Okay.
Howard, correct me if I'm wrong, in our last newsletter, did it not say it was on the 4th and started at 11?
It did.
Yeah. Somebody commented to me too, around about that, that it was in the newsletter for the 4th.
It did. It was changed after the newsletter went out.
Now, we have, you know, to Howard's credit, we've gotten the dig- I mean, if you guys have seen the digital boards from Lamar, I mean, we've tried to get that artwork and change it and post it wherever there's space avail per the, you know, the agreement with Lamar, so that, you know, somewhat helpful. I don't know what else we can, you know, what else we can do.
The big- We have a lot of places in town that promises digital space, we approved their signs. Can we start hitting these people up too now?
You could, yeah, Dorinda, do you want to? Howard's got the artwork. I don't know if we want to talk to the, you know, the owner of the radio station or the building over there, Mr. Alt, and see if he can't, that's a pretty good-sized panel-
That's a great idea.
That needs to go up there.
I'll call Mr. Alt tomorrow morning, first thing.
And that's not a, personally, Howard, that's not a, well, hopefully, he won't make it difficult through the chamber. He's kind of been somewhat, you know-
And I'll send the artwork to Dorinda if she has any contacts with folks who have signs, and-
Right.
We'll start calling around to the folks-
Walter Smith could put it up.
Yep. The other thing is, I've instructed Karen to order banners, along Broadway. We're already getting the quotes for those, and so hopefully, those will be up as soon as, and I've told Karen, as soon as possible.
Are they still up now?
On Broadway?
Yeah, North Broadway. Aren't you?
No.
I don't think so.
Oh, that's where the food, sorry.
So, you know, we're doing everything we can to get the word out. Working on a flyover, so we can hopefully have that. Haven't had final confirmation, but I'm hopeful that we'll get a flyover this year.
Okay.
You know, it might be a little bit smaller than parades in the past, because Karen has been working on getting entries, and some folks have indicated, well, we planned on the 4th, and, you know, we can't make it on the 3rd. But I think over time, it'll build on itself, and it'll be a nice event.
Okay. Anything else under Elections and PR, Howard?
No, sir.
I just want to take this opportunity to thank Howard and Carol. Joe, pass on to Carol, what a fabulous job on Municipal Government Week. Again, I think all the kids enjoyed themselves. I enjoyed having the kids in, I'm sure all of you guys did, you folks did. I think that's a neat event that we do every year, to give these schoolkids a taste of what we go through. Unfortunately, they're not there when the phone call comes in at 2:00 in the morning, but they get a taste for what we go through as elected officials and department head staff, so, you know, it's, that's an enjoyable day. So, again, Howard, thank you. Anyone else? The department heads that I might be leaving out, and especially Carol with her committee, that was a real nice event. Thank our folks at Spring Hill, right, Rich? Spring Mill for their donation. That was very generous of them as well, so make sure that we, if you need me to, let's get out some thank you letters to-
Sure.
-appropriate people, okay?
And also, Lake County Solid Waste as well. I don't want to forget-
Yes, they donated, didn't they? Yes.
And special thanks to Carol. She puts the touches on the events to really make it special.
Yep. Okay. Anything else under Elections? Economic Development, Mr. Grouchek?
Yes, Route 30 Project is getting ready to start. I've seen some equipment out there in the last few days or so, and last time when we had the construction, people were confused where their interest is, where their businesses or whatever. I would ask that we grant, you know, them temporary sign usage while the construction's going on. Is that gonna, not going to be a problem, right, Dorinda, as far as us granting? Huh?
Hasn't in the past.
Okay.
Okay.
Just so they can have signs and banners or whatever.
Why don't we, I would take it a step further, Tom, and Howard, why don't you, when Bruce gets back, instruct Bruce to visit those businesses and make them that offer to, you know, just send a letter into Dorinda, and if they need a temporary sign to direct people into their business, let's go ahead and allow that. Mr. Buscemi, do we need a motion on something like that, or is that just, do we need that, Dorinda? Or can we just, they just usually come into your office, don't they, and get a temporary sign?
Well, temporary sign permits are issued to governmental agencies, not of organizations or governmental agencies. So, this being a special situation, I can address it to those businesses that are located along the improvements of Broadway.
Why don't we show, why don't we show, John, do you have a problem? Why don't we show for the record that Tom makes a motion? Would that be appropriate? Tom, why don't you go ahead and put it on the record?
Motion that we grant temporary sign locations for the improvements on Route 30 there through the construction zone while the construction's going on.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Grouchek, seconded by Mr. Whitey to allow the businesses along US 30 in the construction zone to install temporary signage to direct people into their businesses this summer while the construction's going on. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anything else, Tom?
No, that's it.
Okay. I have one item, Howard, that I want to pass on to the rest of the council. I was at a lunch meeting last Monday with the Crossroads Regional Chamber of Commerce, and they're looking at reorganizing their Economic Development Committee, and they want to come in, they, I gave them ideas about our tax abatement. They want to sit down with Crown Point, make this an agenda item, Tom, or I'll make this an agenda item for the workshop. Sue Reed and Kent Jeffers are going to come in and kind of just give us an overview of what the chamber's looking at redoing or thinking about doing with the reorganization, and they want ideas from us. What can we do to help, you know, economic development when it comes in? You know, Modern Drop Forge came in, they got personal and real property tax abatement. You know, what do we do with our Tiff districts, things like that? Business licenses, I threw out to them, Howard. Some of the things you and I have kicked around as far as Amerplex at the crossroads, some of that stuff, so I want to make that a workshop item for June, okay? Utility Liaison, Mr. Whitey?
No report.
All right. Under Utilities, Bud or Matt, do you have a report under Stormwater?
Yes. First of all, I want to thank everybody that attended the MS4 Annual Conference. We had an excellent showing. I'm on the Planning Committee for that event with the state, and we actually had some very good comments back. They actually asked me to be on the committee for next year as well. The 54th Court Rain Garden Project, construction began a few weeks ago. Everything's going smoothly, haven't had any glitches or any problems or issues with that project, so I anticipate it'll be completed on schedule. The Taft Street Drainage Improvements Project, Christopher Burke Engineering completed all the engineering plans and bid documents. Actually, we finalized all the environmental permitting, including the Rule 5 permitting. We advertised, and we'll have a bid opening on June 21st, so we anticipate they'll begin construction in another month and a half or so on that project, so it's been a long time coming, and it's great to see that finally coming to construction. 54th Avenue Waterline Replacement Project in Meadowdale, first group engineering is continuing with the survey and design work, so we've got periodic updates from them. Regarding the Stormwater Center, design is 100% complete. We have a final set of plans. We are finalizing the bid documents, so that's going to be going out for bid shortly as well. We anticipate a bid opening on July 17th. We have seasonal interns starting. They've started actually clearing and snagging. I started them behind the Dairy Queen at 73rd and Taft Street, and they'll be working also along Chase Street, just south of Rosenbaum Park. I also have some interns working on a public street inventory as part of a match for a grant, and they're doing brochure development and other activities. I met with MCD to discuss INI Disconnect Program. They want us involved a little bit, because they're trying to prevent stormwater from getting into their system, so they surveyed a few areas that have some ponding, and we went out and looked at some of these select areas, and we're looking at Robinson, and we're putting some plans together for some small projects to assist, you know, their infrastructure as well as ours, so we can work cooperatively with them. Under Stormwater Enforcement, we designed a new stop order form, and our compliance officers are out there inspecting all the sites and continuing to issue citations as needed. We are also looking at a new waterway signage program. We designed a waterway sign that would be about street size, street limit size, that would go where major crossings are along roadways, partnering with Robinson Engineering on that, so that when people go across, they can identify which, you know, water body they're crossing, and so if there's an issue or a problem, it's just more of an awareness campaign about our waterways, which is very important. And we submitted an abstract and an ASAM that was finally accepted, so we're on the agenda for the Fall Conference. So, myself and my compliance officer, Joe Fish, will be discussing our illicit discharge program, along with our enforcement program, at that state conference. That's all I have.
Excuse me. Couple of weeks left for the, that spring project for 63rd Avenue to pipe. I was wondering, has there any progress been made since the Robinson found the other side of the pipe, over tracks?
Oh, the railroad, the CNN Railroad? We all got together and we discussed this, and our intent is also put in a new pipe. The old one, we don't want to rely on for that particular area, and the railroad agreed with that. And so, we agreed that we would do the design and survey work, and they would do the construction, since we can't do construction within their right-of-way. There were some issues with the pipelines that are running adjacent to that, so that we need to know the depth of that, because we want to actually carve out a swale, so then it would travel into that area a little bit better, so we have a little bit more flow of that stormwater from that wetland area and get through, through the pipes, and it would travel onward from there. So, we're working with CNN on that, and John's been in communications with them for that particular area.
You know, I met those guys from Robinson that dug that pipe out. I mean, this guy was pretty built, pretty nice, you know, but I took him some ice water, and they were great individuals to talk to, and I was very impressed on his work ethic, you know? So, I appreciate any information you could give me, Mr. Lake, and thank you for your report, sir.
Sure. No problem. Thanks.
All right. Anything else under Utility, then?
Oh, that's what I had. We might want to send somebody out to look at that waterline project that you're doing along Broadway there, because I've noticed, like, in all the parking lots, there's a lot of-
Debris.
-debris from the construction.
I was going to ask, again, with Bruce being on vacation, John, if you can pass that, Howard and John, if you can pass that on to Bruce and, or John, if you can go out there and take a look at that for us, and just, you know, make sure everything's, give it the eyeball test, or have one of your field inspectors give it the eyeball test and make sure we've, we're being diligent and tidy and cognizant of the businesses along the east side of Broadway there, so.
Yeah, because 5/3rd's parking lot was-
Yeah. Yeah, I noticed that the other day.
Covered up pretty bad. Same thing with Applebee's.
Yep. Okay. Okay. Next item on the agenda is General Orders. First reading ordinance is Ordinance 12-26, an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Indiana, amending Town Code of Chapter 6 Building and Building Regulations, Chapter 19 Subdivision, and all other areas related to engineering fees for building permits and subdivision proposals in the Town of Maryville.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Grouchek, seconded by Mr. Whitey to approve Ordinance 12-26 on first reading. Is there any discussion amongst the council? Seeing none, Mr. Gernsy, roll call.
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yeah.
Grouchek.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Whitey.
Aye.
Edit.
Yes. Motion carries 6-0. Ordinance 12-27 is an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2012 budget within the local road and street budget. Total increase is $6,000, total decrease is the same, net effect is zero.
Motion set.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Span, seconded by Mr. Grouchek to approve Ordinance 12-27 on first reading. Any discussion amongst the council? Seeing none, Mr. Gernsy, roll call.
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yeah.
Grouchek.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Whitey.
Aye.
Edit.
Aye. Motion carries 6-0. Ordinance 12-29 is an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the Police Property Seizures Fund of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana for the year 2012, not included in the current budget.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Whitey, seconded by Mr. Span to approve Ordinance 12-29 on first reading. Is there any discussion amongst the council? Seeing none, Mr. Gernsy, roll call.
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yeah.
Grouchek.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Whitey.
Aye.
Edit.
Aye. Motion carries 6-0. Ordinance 12-30, an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the Maryville Fire Territory Operating Fund of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana for the year 2012, not included in the current budget.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Whitey, seconded by Mr. Grouchek to approve Ordinance 12-30 on first reading. Is there any discussion amongst the council? Seeing none, Mr. Gernsy, roll call.
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yeah.
Grouchek.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Whitey.
Aye.
Edit.
Aye. Motion carries 6-0. Ordinance 12-31, an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the Stormwater Utility Board Fund of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana for the year 2012, not included in the current budget.
No move.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Baron, seconded by Mr. Span to approve Ordinance 12-31 on first reading. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Gernsy, roll call.
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yeah.
Grouchek.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Whitey.
Aye.
Edit.
Aye. Motion carries 6-0. Ordinance 12-32 on first reading, I'm going to read by title only. An ordinance authorizing the fire protection territory of Maryville, Indiana to make temporary loans to meet current running expenses for the use of the Equipment Fund and the Fire Fund of the issuer in anticipation of and not in excess of current tax levied in the year 2011, and collectible in the year 2012. Authorizing the issuance of temporary loan tax anticipation warrants to evidence such loans and the sale of such warrants to the Indiana Bond Bank, and appropriating and pledging the taxes to be received in such funds to the punctual payment of such warrants, including the interest thereon.
Motion accept.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Span, seconded by Mr. Grouchek to approve Ordinance 12-32 on first reading. Is there any discussion amongst council? As a side note, Mr. Fink, is this the one we wanted to do? Okay, we'll take care of that. Any discussion amongst council? Seeing none, Mr. Gernsy, roll call. All right, given the guidance, Mr. Bishemi, that we have one member absent, is the suspension of the rules have to be unanimous, a vote of those present or the entire council?
Suspension of rules is of the members present, not the entire seven-member council.
Carol, entertain a motion to suspend the rules to hear 12-32 on second reading.
I motion to suspend the rules to hear ordinance 12-32 on second reading.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Whiting, seconded by Mr. Guralcheck, to suspend the rules and hear ordinance 12-32 on second reading. This is only to suspend the rules, is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Guernsey, roll call, please.
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yes.
Guralcheck.
Yes.
Barron.
Aye.
Whiting.
Aye.
Bennett.
Aye. Motion carries 6-0. Next ordinance, ordinance 12-33 is an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the Police Equipment Fund of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, for the fiscal year 2012, not included in the current budget.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Whiting, seconded by Mr. Span, to approve ordinance 12-32 on first reading. Is there any discussion amongst the council? Seeing none, Mr. Guernsey, roll call.
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yes.
Guralcheck.
Yes.
Barron.
Aye.
Whiting.
Aye.
Bennett.
Aye. Motion carries 6-0. At the request of our administrator, there is a legal requirement to pass this on second reading, is that correct, Mr. Fink?
Yes, sir.
All right, given the guidance, Mr. Bishemi, that we have one member absent, is the suspension of the rules have to be unanimous, a vote of those present or the entire council?
Suspension of rules is of the members present, not the entire seven-member council.
Carol, entertain a motion to suspend the rules to hear 12-32 on second reading.
I motion to suspend the rules to hear ordinance 12-32 on second reading. So moved.
Motion by Mr. Whiting, seconded by Mr. Guralcheck, to suspend the rules and hear ordinance 12-32 on second reading. This is only to suspend the rules, is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Guernsey, roll call, please.
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yes.
Guralcheck.
Yes.
Barron.
Aye.
Whiting.
Aye.
Bennett.
Aye. Motion carries 6-0. Next ordinance, ordinance 12-33 is an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the Police Equipment Fund of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, for the fiscal year 2012, not included in the current budget.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Whiting, seconded by Mr. Span, to approve ordinance 12-33 on first reading. Is there any discussion amongst the council? Seeing none, Mr. Guernsey, roll call, please.
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yes.
Guralcheck.
Yes.
Barron.
Aye.
Whiting.
Aye.
Bennett.
Aye. Motion carries 6-0. Next ordinance, ordinance 12-33 is an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the Police Equipment Fund of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, for the fiscal year 2012, not included in the current budget.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Whiting, seconded by Mr. Span, to approve ordinance 12-33 on first reading. Is there any discussion amongst the council? Seeing none, Mr. Guernsey, roll call.
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yes.
Guralcheck.
Yes.
Barron.
Aye.
Whiting.
Aye.
Bennett.
Aye. Motion carries 6-0. Next ordinance, ordinance 12-33 is an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the Police Equipment Fund of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, for the fiscal year 2012, not included in the current budget.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Whiting, seconded by Mr. Span, to approve ordinance 12-33 on first reading. Is there any discussion amongst the council? Seeing none, Mr. Guernsey, roll call.
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yes.
Guralcheck.
Yes.
Barron.
Aye.
Whiting.
Aye.
Bennett.
Aye. Motion carries 6-0. Okay, that's all first reading. Second reading, ordinance 12-21, an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, creating an HRA Insurance Deductible Fund Retroactive to 420 of 12.
Motion accept. Second.
Motion by Mr. Span, seconded by Mr. Guralcheck, to approve ordinance 12-21 on second reading. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, since this is second reading, is there any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, Mr. Guernsey, roll call.
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yes.
Guralcheck.
Yes.
Barron.
Aye.
Whiting.
Aye.
Bennett.
Aye. Motion carries 6-0. Next ordinance, 12-22 is an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, creating a stormwater grants fund.
Motion accept.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Span, seconded by Mrs. Barron, to approve ordinance 12-22 on second reading. Is there any discussion amongst the council? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, Mr. Guernsey, roll call.
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yes.
Guralcheck.
Yes.
Barron.
Aye.
Whiting.
Aye.
Bennett.
Aye. Motion carries 6-0. Next ordinance is ordinance 12-23, an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, creating a stormwater debt service reserve fund.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Barron, seconded by Mr. Span, to approve ordinance 12-23 on second reading. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, is there any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, Mr. Guernsey, roll call.
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yes.
Guralcheck.
Yes.
Barron.
Aye.
Whiting.
Aye.
Bennett.
Aye. Motion carries 6-0. Next ordinance is 12-24, an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, reducing appropriations of the 2012 budget from the Police Department budget. The total decrease, for the record, ladies and gentlemen, is another $151,000. And before I vote, Joe, I can't thank you enough personally for doing this for the budget again. I know the guys are toughing it out, and hopefully we're gonna get to the bottom and get some resolve, so we don't have to keep doing this and balancing this budget on the backs of our police officers, it's ridiculous. I hope our legislators hear that in the press. Karen and Chaz, you wanna quote me? All right, I grandstand it enough. Any discussion amongst, did I have a motion, I'm sorry, on 12-24?
So moved. Second.
By Mr. Span, seconded by Mr. Whiting. Is there any discussion on ordinance 12-24? Seeing none, any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Mr. Guernsey, roll call.
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yes.
Guralcheck.
Yes.
Barron.
Aye.
Whiting.
Aye.
Bennett.
Aye. Motion carries 6-0. Next ordinance is ordinance 12-23, an ordinance of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, creating a stormwater debt service reserve fund.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Guralcheck, seconded by Mr. Span, to approve ordinance 12-25 on second reading. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, is there any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, Mr. Guernsey, roll call.
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yes.
Guralcheck.
Yes.
Barron.
Aye.
Whiting.
Aye.
Bennett.
Aye. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is resolutions. Resolution 12-09, Town of Maryville, Indiana, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, transferring monies of the 2012 budget within certain categories. Total decrease is $103,750. The total increase is the same, the net effect is zero.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Guralcheck, seconded by Mr., excuse me, motion by Mr. Span, seconded by Mr. Guralcheck, to approve resolution 12-09. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 12-10, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the 2012 budget within the stormwater utility budget. Total decrease is $3,000, total increase is the same, net effect is zero.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Whiting, seconded by Mr. Span, to approve resolution 12-10. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.